Good evening. It's Tuesday, June 25, 2013, and I'm opening this meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 4, 2013 special meeting workshop?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane Cantares. All those, any amendments to that?
There haven't amendments. Under Committee Meetings for Curriculum, it says a review of the CEELT.
That's the next item. That's the next, those are the June 11 meetings.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So, all those in favor of that motion? That motion passes. Now may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 11, 2013 regular meeting? And that is amended at your place.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We now have time for public comment. Would any members of the public like to comment? Okay, then we'll move on to reports and discussion. And our first discussion item is board goals, review of 2012-13 goals, and development of next year's goals. So in our packet are the four goals that we set for the district for this year. Does anyone want to take a stab at kind of evaluating how we've done? Well, I think in the Improving Communication Department, I'm sure everyone would feel that, you know, a more consistent use of email by staff has been a big boost to improve in communication. The 21st Century Teaching and Learning, I think we have, you know, once we, actually if we start from number four, our contract conclusions, we did conclude all those contracts. That also enabled us to move forward with some of the curricular changes required by Common Core. And as we can see in this evening's agenda item, the number of professional development opportunities that teachers are taking advantage of are quite a few. So when we talk about professional development, I think we're actually using a lot of our professional development resources. I'd like to highlight as well, in terms of the goal of broadening curricular opportunities, that at the high school, we're really at a terrific place right now at trying to broaden those opportunities. The continuation of the Gateway to Technology program in the middle school kind of really seems to be rolling along very well so that we can add a class to the high school with that program. And I think the school climate and student health is a mix. I think honestly, from my own standpoint, being on the board many years, that sometimes there is a board goal that's sort of a jumble of all the things that we thought were important but didn't specifically pull out to focus on, but we didn't want to say, you know, they're all important. So that's how I kind of feel about number three, is that there's a lot in there. Some of them we've made some progress on. I think one thing, the lunch program, I know we're all feeling frustrated by trying to reform the program so it's healthy and also financially sustainable. But I will say, I think that someone has pointed out in the past whether or not we even, you know, we put in this issue about making healthy choices related to avoidance of illegal drugs, alcohol, and tobacco use. And, you know, we might want to consider when we do our board goals for the next year, whether we really need that as a board goal, or whether we already have embedded in the curriculum K-12 a lot of opportunities to do that kind of teaching. So, so school climate and student health, I think was just a little too much of a grab bag. But the contract conclusion, which took the better part of the fall on all those, with all those bargaining units, we did complete that. So, you know, a lot to feel positive about, and definitely certain things that are still on the table that we need to look at for next year. Does anyone have any comments about that? Diane?
Yeah, I agree with all of your assessments. I guess I'll add there, you know, although the lunch program feels frustrating, we did get the draft of the lunch audit, and it is very detailed with lots of information that I think we could really use as a starting point next year to make some big changes that will be both, that will be financially beneficial and we'll have to talk about food quality. You know, that's sort of a different, didn't focus necessarily on food quality, but certainly I think there was enough specific recommendations to work from.
Yeah.
Even though it's a little late coming, we did accomplish that. And I think that it would be nice, you know, when we're working on the new board goals, to just come back to number three and decide, you know, what do we really, what do we really want to do with illegal drugs, alcohol, tobacco, health? You know, do we, it's part of our curriculum. If we wanted it to be a board goal, what do we really want, what does that really mean? Do we want to have public workshops? Do we want to have weekends, you know, educational workshops? Do we want that to be an active part of our principles? You know, modeling things and bringing in public speakers or assemblies, which they did do some of this year. But it would be, you know, it would be nice to reflect on that, what do we really want with that.
Mm-hmm. So Diane, did you, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I mean, your assessment was pretty much right on. But yeah, number three, I think, is probably the only, the only one we would need to work on. But I think when we talked about goals last year, we kind of struggled between making them kind of a big general goal, or if they should be specific, and I think that's why the goal number three is kind of big.
Yeah.
Big goal. So, yeah, I think we'll work on the goals after we think through that again, maybe. Maybe it's too big and too general.
Right. It's been a longstanding issue, as I know, Mark, probably second, whenever we discuss board goals is, you know, we have a lot that we want to get done. And so how to, and Joe always reminds us not to bite off more than we can chew. And even though you do.
So is that one last bite that you probably could have wiped from the table?
Yeah, isn't always the way?
Yeah.
So a recommendation I have in terms of moving forward for next year, do we have any updates on a date for the board goal workshop?
Yeah, we do. And I'm wondering whether we are having, the district is having email problems because I sent out an email on that topic, and a number of you didn't get. So it may be, it may be at our end.
Yeah, I'll have Michelle look at it.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, to answer your question, the Robert Hendricks, the guy that we had last year facilitate that workshop, is not available that Saturday, the 13th, wouldn't you know? But he, but he is available that Tuesday, the 16th, when I think everybody else was available. Because at one point, we were looking at maybe having a regular board meeting that night, you know, as we were looking at the whole summer schedule. So he would be available to come here, like mid to late afternoon, and then work with us through the evening if we wanted to. So, you know, right now, it looks like he, I guess he's going to be up in Albany the day before and doing some work in the morning. So, so he could, he could stop by here on his way back to, to his home on Long Island and, and, you know, spend four, five, six hours with us, and maybe we'd, you know, we'd bring in something to eat and work through dinner here. So if that day and kind of a late afternoon to, you know, eight-ish or so works for everybody. Right now, I've got him penciled, we penciled in on his calendar, but I need to let him know. So, you know, he's a pretty busy guy. So I haven't heard back from Laura or Deirdre Dalbert, but obviously our emails aren't getting out. So just so you know, if any of you sent me emails today, I respond to all of them.
Oh, okay. I didn't get any from you.
So we're, we're obviously having a problem.
Yeah.
So I'll just have to update you verbally tonight. Because I put quite a bit of detail out there.
Oh, that's too bad.
So, yeah, it's just the way it goes.
All right.
So if I get a positive response from Deirdre and Laura, then we'll try to get this email problem fixed, and I'll shoot that out again tomorrow, then we can, we can lock that 16th thing.
Okay.
So I would ask you to pencil it in on your calendars right now, because if that doesn't work, we're pretty much at a loss.
What time are you thinking?
Oh, I don't know, maybe three or four-ish and go till eight or nine-ish. I'm just, I'm ballparking. We'll firm up the times, but it would be that chunk of the day, I think, that would work for him, and hopefully would work for all of you.
And that, we were thinking that focus of that was going to be goals, or that second part of what he said he could do last time?
Well, I think, I think there, we can, he'll be glad to do whatever you would like him to focus on. I think, considering that we have two new board members, I think he ought to spend at least some of that time kind of going over that process thing. But I think, I think he ought to spend a chunk of that time talking about goal setting, if that's what all of you want out of it. He'll tailor it to meet our needs, so it's a matter of having us decide what to spend time on.
I guess if we, depending on how many hours we can get, maybe the responses from people will determine that.
Yeah, yeah.
If people have time constraints, that, you know, make some time on a little bit of process stuff because people are new, and I don't, I don't know how, you know, maybe one, we could look at some of what he did last time, if anyone has them, and sort of take off from that a little bit. But then do the goals.
Yeah.
And one thing I was going to suggest is if we could all, and maybe, there might be other pieces of information we want for that workshop, but I know Meg at other times has provided us with like a, his, a document that has board goals from the last several years.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we have. I had that on my order, Josh.
Okay. Because that'll help the new board members in particular see kind of how we frame them in the past. And then if there are other things as we get closer that people think might be useful to have as documents ahead of time.
Just let us know.
Or he does.
I mean, he may suggest having some things there too.
Or if he has something that he wants to share with us.
And would we need to set up another time to work on that, because we might come out of it with our goal?
Right.
We probably would, yeah.
So we probably need to set up either, you know, easier set up.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, maybe early, one of our other board meetings that we're going to set earlier and until.
Mm-hmm.
So we can try to get them.
Yeah, so if we leave that meeting with some kind of next steps, then that would be good.
Good.
Any other thoughts on that, on doing that for the 16th?
No, I would just say it would be nice if we could have, just had like a bunch of ideas where we wanted to go with board goals before we started, rather than starting from scratch in that room. You know, we usually email you.
Right.
Top four.
Okay, yeah. So maybe what we could do is I could email out to people, ask them to send to me their ideas, and I'll just do like a list, like I've done before, just not refine, not, you know, wordsmithed or anything, but just a list of ideas.
Yeah. Because one nice piece of feedback could be, you know, your board goals are too general, or your board goals are too focused, or here's your common denominator, this is how you should approach it. That would be helpful.
Okay. All right. Anything else on that? Well, I think, you know, just to reflect again on the this year's goals, I mean, I think in a time when there was a lot to do that was, has been mandated by the state, starting with what made our contract negotiations more complicated because of the APR and the standards, I think we've done a good job, you know, as a district, not just these particular goals, but just, you know, getting through a really rocky time, and we're still in the middle of it, but sort of just still staying focused on some of the things that we want to get done. And so I think that's something to feel good about.
I think we've covered a lot of ground and got a lot done. We still have a lot more to do, but.
Yeah.
We go backwards, and we didn't spin our wheels.
Exactly. That's exactly right. Okay, so we'll move on to our next set of reports, board committee reports. We have the finance committee meeting. Diane, you did those.
Yeah, actually, the minutes are very short, but there's a bunch of budget transfers in our package, packet. We just reviewed all the reasons behind all those transfers. Most of them are very basic and obvious. The lawnmower broke, we need a new lawnmower, they're paying for CEELT, substitute teachers, long-term subs, workers' comp. There really wasn't any shocking or unexplainable transfer. And M&amp;T Bank has, where we keep the majority of our money, has approached the district about changing their collateral from T-bonds, which it currently is, to mortgage-backed security that's guaranteed by the government. So we sort of, in general, discussed the pros and cons, and the next step is really, Tom's going to get more specific information about that. And it's not an easy decision, it's not one that we're going to make quickly, but Tommy can.
The other thing about that too, is now the pros and cons of that, is if that is a direction the finance committee would like the board to look at, there would need to be a change in the policy, because the policy refers to T-bills. We'd have to add that these types of securities are also another form of collateral. So right now, our policy forbids us to do that, but if we think it's a good idea to do this, then, you know, we'd also have to take it from finance and recommend to policy to, to that be allowable collateral for us.
Okay, well, it sounds like the finance committee then has a, you know, big summer topic to learn more about. Yeah, okay. Any other questions for finance? Okay, then we'll move on to facilities minutes. Mark, you did those minutes.
Okay, Facilities Committee discussed several projects. There's, at the end of the school year, is approximately $50,000 available on maintenance codes from the 2012-13 budget. So we're looking at small maintenance projects that could be done using that money that, so there were three main projects that we discussed, which were replacing the stage curtain for Chancellor, because the curtain that's there now cannot be fireproofed again, so it's within one or two years of the end of its useful life. There's some doors that need to be replaced due to the age and wear on the exterior of the building. And also, we're going to continue replacing door handles and locks to make the doors ADA compliant. And then there are some additional funds, or additional projects that could be done from the 13-14 budget as well. And then we discussed that our next meeting would be in September.
Any questions for facilities? Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to 4.2.3, which I think is, is this community, this policy?
That's, that's from the policy.
Okay.
It's not a policy, but.
Oh, and the minute, okay, and then the minutes are at our table, right. Okay. So the minutes are at our table. Oh, and Mark, that's you again.
Yes.
Okay.
So we discussed the FAQ document that's in your packet, which really is just a plain language document that describes how to raise a concern, kind of combines the four, 1400 policies regarding concerns. And we decided that it needed two minor revisions that we'll then bring to the full board. We envisioned, once it's completed, putting it out on the website and other channels of communication, so that the parents and other members of the public know how to raise concerns. We discussed Policy 5280 on interstalastic athletics, which is ready for first reading once we clarify language regarding the returning from injury. Policy 5442, participation on athletic teams, which I believe is going to be a new policy, just and clarifies ways students are selected for teams. And 9240, recruiting and hiring, we have been looking at that, was in our packet for the last, for the first reading.
It's first reading tonight, yeah.
And some language was changed regarding long-term subs. And then we worked on our agenda for next year, which includes policies that were called out in the internal audit, possible review of the policy book, possibly a policy on the frequency of policy review, and a policy on conduct at athletic classes.
My head's spinning. Okay, so I have a question. Is the, the participation on athletic teams, is that related to the document from Steve Boucher on our athletic policy?
Yeah, actually.
Sort of pulling that out and.
Actually, 5280 and 5442, they both have elements from that document. That document, and I was, I was just going to mention that, so I'm glad you brought it up, is, is what we've been working on, and we've discussed it a couple of times here. This is like the, the holy grail of documents for the year, that we finally found it and held it up like this. So that's, that's in the FYI section of your, of your book. So again, feel free to, to take a look at that. If you have any, any feedback, please provide that to us. Our plan is to put that document, or some iteration thereof, as part of the athlete's handbook that, that we give to all the athletes at the beginning of each sports season, so they and their parents will have information on the purposes of the program, the levels of competition, and how they differ from modified JV diversity, how selections are made to teams. I mean, you know all the content, we've talked about it before, and it's, it's in there. So we'll use that, but we certainly, you know, welcome any kind of feedback.
Right.
It's not board policy, it's, it's an administrative document, but if you have thoughts or feedback to give us, please do so, I would say by the end of July, because then we'll be putting it in that.
Right, okay.
Document for, you know, the live, with it on, you know, the third week in August.
So can I just ask, so I guess we'll discuss it when you do the draft policy, because we don't have a.
Right, right.
And that seems appropriate to actually have a policy about how teams are selected?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's still in the.
In the hopper, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's on the list for things, the to-do list for next year's policies.
Okay, okay. Diane?
Well, I think we want to make the full board aware that we talked about for next year, Policy Committee, so we'll be, I guess, going through processes again there.
Right.
Talked about the possibility of having maybe two meetings a month for policy. One meeting would, there's plenty to do for policy, but one would be just to start on through each policy, because we kind of get them as there's an issue, or we come across them, but there's no, you know, it turns into maybe 10 years before every policy's reviewed, so maybe like a five-year plan to go through each section. So just, that came up with the two meetings for policy.
Okay. Note to self, don't, don't.
Well, there didn't seem another way to do it, because the regular meetings are full.
Right.
There's no time to get to them and to set a goal of trying to get through all the policies that have to be reviewed.
It's a lot of work.
You know. Presumably, you guys discussed the idea of using Newsbiz Policy Service again? Do we talk about that? They, I know that has its own issues perhaps, but they take the whole book and then they send them back to you after reviewing them with.
I think our, I think our feeling was that having just gone through that process about 10 years ago now, I mean, 10 years is a good chunk of time. On the other hand, it probably wasn't done for 20 or 30 years before that, so it's reasonably up to date in terms of the amount of work it takes to churn through that. I think our feeling was, it's in pretty good shape now.
Okay.
But if we can chunk it out to, you know, to dedicate during the course of the year at this, at these, at these extra second meetings, we'll see how that goes. But chunk out a section or two a year and just, again, go through them again. And we're not going to wordsmith every policy from the ground up. We're going to review it and get the sense as to whether it still meets our needs, and then just kind of churn through this on a regular schedule. I think that was more the point, was that we, the Policy Committee is taking on the responsibility of doing a regular, ongoing review of the policies, instead of just adding when there's an issue that requires us to need a policy we don't have, or revise a policy, because, you know, it's, it's been all reactive really.
Right.
And there's plenty of reactive stuff to do in policy. So I think we're trying to, to be more proactive with that committee, but it will take more time. I just know two ways about it, and we'll see how it goes. And yeah, if I'm the only one in the Policy Committee, I could meet at home like I said. They go real fast, but.
I think we all did discuss that we were still willing to be on the committee next year, so I don't know what we were thinking, but.
Okay.
Since we were willing to be on the committee, we were willing to suggest that people might consider that.
Well, we just didn't want to set a goal that we couldn't obtain realistically, so it's a way to accomplish that.
All right. We'll see how that goes.
So we will.
I guess I'll add, you know, something to consider would be you could, I'm not on policy, nor do I have any desire to, so.
Especially not now.
You know, the policies are all sort of broken down into sections.
Right.
So you could just tackle a section a year.
Right, that's, that's the thought, one or two years. Some will go further than others, but.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to do like all, like five thousand policies.
No, it'll probably take five years.
Sorry, I forgot to butt in, sorry.
Right.
You know, because we can come, you know, sometimes you just by accident come across one, go, well, that's outdated.
Right, right.
You know, so this way, at least you're making an effort to go through them. And if something required a lot of work, we can throw it to a regular meeting, which I, you know, and just really make.
Okay. Well, you guys are very intrepid. I have a question about the FAQ document. I have some thoughts about it, so I was wondering if you would want me to, if I had an electronic copy, because it's kind of long. I think it might be too long. Some places it's too wordy, is my, just my, these would be my, my thoughts about it. And so.
Well, I would be glad, I would be glad to provide a digital copy to anybody who wants that. And the reason we brought it to your attention here tonight is because even though it isn't policy, doesn't have to be adopted by the board, we did want everybody on the board to have the opportunity to see it and provide feedback. So if, you know, doing it digitally is the most convenient way for those who want to weigh in to do so, I can, oh, I was going to say I can easily send it out via email tomorrow, but I don't want to make.
We'll see.
Yeah, I couldn't have done that today, apparently, so I can provide that to you.
Okay, great. And that being said, I really appreciate, I think Lisa put it together, and I think that that's great, that she took the time to do that, and, you know, to grapple with how to have an, and the whole committee, just the concept of an FAQ, because that's really a fundamental thing that crops up a lot from parents and community members, is like, so I have this concern, what do I do now? So the idea of an FAQ is great, it's great that Lisa put this together, and I think actually, in terms of our communication goal for the year, if we refine this and get this up on the website as the next year starts, it's, I think that's terrific, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the next committee.
You want to, I'll keep this, please.
Yeah, audit, I think, is that Diane, I guess you're the only one from the committee.
I am. Where is that?
It's at our places, yeah. You can just review it quickly, you don't have to go through.
Don't worry, I won't.
Because.
This is, yeah, it's very detailed. Okay. Let me get my mind back there. We reviewed the external audit again, and we emailed to the auditors with some specific changes we wanted in the final document. They have returned that to us. I'm just waiting for Tom to give final approval and mail it to Joe. Then at the next meeting, we should be able to present it. We discussed how the district wants to approach dealing with the IRS. Should the audit committee sort of stay abreast of that, or should, do you want Tom to present directly to the board, anything that we need to know? to the board anything that we need to know about? We felt like that should be a board decision, because the audit committee doesn't really have any directorial in that.
Right.
Meeting with the claims auditor, we're going to try and meet with him at the beginning of this next year. We reviewed the charter and had no changes to make this year. The two and three members have completed the self-survey, so we'll finish that up next time. And we discussed adding community members to the audit committee and felt that the new committee should weigh in before an existent was made. The focused audit is back, and probably in the next meeting or two, we'll be able to present that as well, and.
That's the one on the food service program?
Yes. And the risk assessment report. We're talking about that. That was getting my head.
Okay. Any questions are coming? So the risk assessment report will be presented to the board at the July 9 meeting, and then did you imply that the external audit would be done at that meeting as well?
Well, no, no, the external audit would be October.
Right, that's okay. That's okay.
They've already started the work, but it's a long process.
And will the board get a copy of the focused audit of the lunch program at some point in the next couple of weeks, we think, or do we not know?
Well, it's in a draft form right now, so I think that's when, when the committee feels comfortable, we'll release that.
Okay.
And do we expect that will go back to the internal auditors potentially for some tweaking before it's finalized?
Yeah, yeah, but I just want to feedback from administration to make sure all the facts are accurate, then we'll ask them to put a final copy together and come and discuss it with us. They can, it's big. I actually would prefer to send it to the board, and we can decide if you want a full presentation directly to the board or directly to our committee.
Okay. And then, so the question you asked about should the committee have any relationship to what is an IRS audit, I mean, my own opinion is no. I mean, there's no reason to, but that's just, my thought is to let the, Tom and Joe handle it, you know, they ask for documents, you give them over, the IRS isn't presenting us with any report for our purposes, they're going to just do their audit and let us know what they found, but I don't see, I don't see a role for the committee in that. I think that, that's just.
I mean, you know what's happening.
Right.
We'll provide you with the information we get, then if, if the audit committee or the full board feels that, you know, that something needs to be done beyond what is recommended or out of what is recommended, then I think there's, I think there's a function then to do what needs to be done at that point. Just my thinking.
That's my, yeah.
I agree. I actually agree with you.
Yeah. Okay. And then as far as the committee, community members, I think to have a community member or two on the, on the audit committee would be great. As far as the qualifications, maybe if you guys want to, because I know that there is a document from the State Controller's Office that guides audit committees of school boards, maybe use that document to come up with, you know, probably three or four, I don't think it's a lot of qualifications, but pertinent ones, maybe just use that, you could just let us know what, whatever this, however this committee is constituted, starting in July, to guide whatever decision you might make. Like, just let us know what qualifications you're using and.
It gets a little tricky. The state audit guidelines really recommend that if you don't feel like you have all the qualifications on your direct board, that you seek outside help. Well, you know, the truth is, none of us are an accountant or in finance or in school business, or, so that seems obvious, but, you know, a simple CPA or a business person doesn't necessarily know the functions of how a school district runs either. I mean, almost an ex-board member would have more qualifications to be, would understand at least what the function of an audit committee is doing. So I think that's, it's in the details of how do you advertise, what are you really looking for, and how do you bring that person up to date with the realities of what day-to-day business is in a district?
Right.
Even as a board member, it's a learning curve, so.
Yeah. I think there are people in our community who are qualified. One thing is, I know, I feel like we have a lot of people in our community who volunteer in their, in various capacities on various boards, and so they get that role at least, where they might not understand school district finance until they sit at a table and start to learn that. So I think that's another thing, is just understanding what a board does, and then the audit committee of a board. But, you know, I think just coming up with a list of things and then figuring, I mean, I think coming from you guys first is probably the best thing, because you're more familiar with some of the, some of the require, some of the things that the state asks for. But I support having a community member.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay, anything else for audit? Yeah.
So the focused audit for the food program, I'm just wondering if any of the changes that need to be made are going to be able to be made from the fall, like the timing of everything, I guess?
Well, a lot of the, some of the things we are already starting to address, but there are, one of the, one of the recommendations, it is a point-of-sale system. We're having a demonstration within the next couple of weeks, I can't remember the exact date. Our accounting program, the company that we deal with, has sold their company to what's called a, I can't remember, it's Harris, I can't remember the exact, it's Harris International, they're out of Canada, but they run Windcap. There's really only three accounting systems in New York State that are large and have a, the one has gone under, but it's gone to another one, Windcap, is what it's basically known as here in New York State. They have a point-of-sale system that would tie into the accounting system, so we're going to get a demonstration of that within the next couple of weeks to see if that's the direction we're going to go in. If we, if we plan to go to Windcap, it would just make all the sense to go with their point-of-sale system. We decide not to go with Windcap, we do have another program that we like called Windsnap that's supported by Holster Boasies.
School master, just school board.
Oh, yeah. So it's a matter of, in a couple of weeks, when we, if we feel as though we want to move the accounting to that particular one, that's the direction we believe we'd go in. If not, we'd go to the other one, Windsnap, which is supported by Holster County, and whatever, it won't be September, but should be at some time during the fall. So it, but the big thing that we'll have to go into that is going to be, there's got a lot of backend work that currently is not done by anybody, inventory, and we do rosters by hand by the cashiers, the rosters would have to be done by somebody in the back room. So there's a lot of backroom, taking track of inventory, recipes, production records, things that are done by hand, which now somehow have to get entered into the system by somebody, and that has yet to be determined. And I'm hoping over the summer, we can figure out how that would, would work.
Okay.
Because that's, that's going to be important, you know.
Well, it's all going to be digital now, right?
Yeah, yeah, and that would be helpful. It can, it will help us in many, many ways, as the, as the audit has pointed out to us that there's, it's a lot tougher manually.
Yeah.
Get rid of the manual system, get into a computerized, so everybody can see what's going on, and it's right there.
Right.
And so that there's no, I don't know what the right word is, but you can track everything back. Audit-wise, you can track everything back to it, where the manual system, you don't have that ability to go back and track right back. Do we know for sure that kid paid cash that day? Other than looking at a tick mark on a, on a sheet of paper, you know it's paid, how it got paid? I don't know.
Right.
Well, I know it's paid for, whether it was paid in cash there, or the parent sent a check in two months ago, and this is one of the lunches, that's the part that we, this will solve that issue.
Well, you'll have more information at your.
Right, well, it'll be right at our fingertips, it'll be real-time, and so that will be very helpful, help with the ordering stuff, making sure, you know.
Well, it sounds like a positive thing, just like all these things, it requires investment upfront, and time and money that pays off later.
It's investment of money and time.
Right.
It's a big investment of money.
Right. Is that it for board committee reports?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We move on now to our comment section, good news. I think, you know, the big good news, is that we had our graduation on Saturday, it was a terrific day, as always. I think it's just a super nice occasion, kind of brings together everything that we do during the year, and our student speakers were excellent, as was our superintendent, and.
And our board president.
And thank you, Dr. Dabimford, for running a very smooth evening, as always, just really terrific. The weather held out, and lots of people come, lots of people come who, recent graduates, members of the community who don't have relatives but are interested in seeing, once again, a lot of alumni come. It's just a really nice occasion, so thank you.
Yeah, I spoke with a, with an adult alum over the weekend, and he said, you know, it was great, I saw so many people that I went to school with and I graduated with, so I mean, it's really, really is a neat kind of community.
Yes.
Everybody kind of gravitates back to the school on that day, it's a, it's a nice thing.
Yeah. We had an audience member with something of a health issue, but I'd like to say that our staff and the people present handled that well as well, so, all in all, really well done, so thank you. Any other good news?
They had the fifth grade graduation moving up ceremony, was held the first time at the high school, the auditorium, and also just.
Oh, great.
It was really, really nice event.
Excellent. That's great to do it there. Wonderful.
And we didn't lose anybody on the whale watch trips, so.
Did not lose anyone.
No, no men or women overboard?
No one overboard.
And were whales spotted at every trip?
Two whales were spotted on our trip, yeah.
Very good.
And the other thing I just wanted to say, maybe it's because it's, it was my last day at Chancellor for my family, but the last day of school, the teachers all come out, wave to the bus as they leave, and it's just a really nice tradition.
Yeah, it is, great.
It's a nice thing that they do, so.
Right. Excellent. Diane?
I just wanted to acknowledge Sheldon, I was just noticing on the way in how beautiful the grounds look, and he obviously had everything freshly mulched and cut from, I shouldn't go and notice, it was really.
Yes, absolutely, and I love that they do like sort of yellow, purple flowers.
Of course.
One of the colors, I just think that's great, so.
Anyone knows?
I asked Sheldon why he didn't plant it early in the spring and that, he says, but it wouldn't look good at graduation, so that's why we waited to do it, because it looked really good. We planted it back in April, eh, you know, gardens get after a while, they're not blooming. He goes, gets the freshest things, the things that he knows are going to look great that day.
Well, he does a great job, yeah. All right, any other good news? All right, then we'll move on to old business. Does anyone have any old business?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, in your packet is a draft document of the technology vision, mission, and goals that was developed out of the visioning session that we held with various, with representatives of various stakeholder groups in our school and our community. I have sent that out to all the participants in the visioning session, asked them if they have any, you know, last comments or things they'd like to see or would like to read differently, and I would, I mean, Beadra and Diane were there, and I'd offer if any board members who weren't there want to have any input in that, again, feel free to contact me within the next couple of weeks. That's something that, that I would like to use as we gear up the process for, for recruiting and hiring a director of technology. I want to use that as kind of the jumping off point, so we can tailor the process to sync with, with that statement. So if you have anything, send it to me within the next week or so, and if not, that's pretty much what it'll look like, we can obviously change it in the future, and our director of technology may decide that going down the road that there are, you know, that there are tweaks that he or she might want to make to it, but for right now, I think it'll be a good tool to help us gear up that process. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thanks for doing it, I think it's great. We've really made a lot of progress on that, so, you know, with the self-audit, hiring, you know, that we're going to do, and, and this, and having a meeting with various stakeholders, I think that's a lot of progress, so this is a good example of that progress, so thank you. Anything else under old business? Okay, and public comment? I mean, I'm just, okay, then we'll move on to other. I have one other, which is just that I will be sending out to everyone, asking people to, if they, what committee assignments they'd like for the coming year, and then I'll just tabulate that and see where we end up, do what kind of trading we might have to do or not, and.
You've got one, you've got one committee already filled, so.
Yeah, I know, I'm not even.
Will Policy Academy set two committees?
It probably should.
So, yeah, so the ninth, we can do that, right?
Yeah.
All right.
I have some others.
Yeah, go ahead.
So with our workshop on the sixteenth, would that make the conference not possible? Because it would overlap.
Well, what, what is the hours of that?
You know, it doesn't say it on here, so it's a waste of time, but I thought it went to like four, five.
Usually it's like a nine to 20, or nine to 20.
Yeah, I thought it was like all day, so.
You know what, they do have, this is the summer law conference, which I think can be really very good.
Yeah, the topics are good.
Yeah, the, the, like, lead attorney for NISBA, Jay Warona, is a really terrific presenter. So I know on the website for NISBA, they actually have a more detailed agenda, so maybe we can look at that and see what's happening in the morning at least, and if it's what the topics that we're interested in, maybe do that morning.
Are there older locations for them?
There are, Rochester and Long Island.
Yeah, I mean, they're kind of.
Long Island's nice this time, do you?
They are, actually, yeah.
It's pretty far out.
Yeah, I'm just kidding.
We talked about possibly going to the convention, but.
Yeah.
We've been looking about it, so start thinking about that now, it's the end of October, but, you know, we'll talk about for next year.
I think there's a, there's a deadline for the.
I think we missed the early deadline already for the one, or maybe that was the law conference.
No, the convention, the early deadline is, or the early registration deadline, I think it's July 1st.
Yeah. I don't know that I'm able to commit to that, right, by the 1st, but maybe.
Second deadline in August.
Right.
Anyway, I know we talked about doing it, I cannot, so we should think about it when we're going to go.
Right.
I guess I wrote down those schedules in there, so even if we did it one day, it's something.
It's in Rochester, right?
It's in Rochester.
Yeah.
It's Rochester's nice that time, yeah. Someone will be underground, and I'll drive, and then.
We were talking about this last year in the fall, is there, do you know, Meg, is there a late, like, how late can we decide to go? To go, or can people add, like, can three people commit, and then we can add people like that?
Probably right up to that week.
I believe you can, yeah, in terms of registration, right up till.
Right up to the end.
Oh, yeah, there's different dates with different fees and.
The, the issue becomes housing.
Right.
I know in, when it was held in Manhattan, the later that you registered and therefore became housing, that they were getting discounts on, the further out you went from where the meetings were being held, and maybe the slightly less desirable the housing.
So how much interest is, I mean, I know, Mark, you've raised it before, people.
What, what dates is it again?
It's October 24th, 25th, and 26th.
Is it a Friday through Sunday?
Uh, oh, yeah, Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, yeah.
I know I can't do Thursday, Friday, there's no point in going to Rochester for Saturday, so, so I can't.
Right. And I know, when we've gone in the past, sometime, like, we might go on a, I don't know.
Well, in, in years past, when we've gone, we've, I think sometimes we've, depending where it is, we've gone like late Thursday.
Right.
So we're there for the start of the, and all the workshops, and really the professional development stuff is really Friday and Saturday.
Right.
So if you get there late Thursday, start right in Friday, you do a whole day Friday, and then a good chunk of Saturday, and typically we've left Saturday afternoon. and then a good chunk of Saturday, and typically we've left Saturday afternoon, so we're all by Saturday evening.
Yeah, it ends at 3:40 p.m. Saturday, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's just.
Do you want to email and see who's interested in going? Start with that.
Well, we start by emailing, see who's interested in going, and available, and then we'll kind of see how things shake out from there.
Yeah. We've decided as late as, like, early September, but if we can save money by deciding sooner, that would be probably good.
Yeah, and some people know for sure it's going to be.
Right, exactly.
I think the housing is the issue. I mean, if you wait that late, then you'll be staying in a hotel in Buffalo. So, you'd be out by the airport. So, it's about 15, 20-minute drive into Rochester to.
Right.
I mean, it's not, it's doable, it's just not convenient.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that up. Any other other? Okay, then we'll move on to our action items. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Okay, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2013-14 course enrollment waivers?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any questions or comments? Diane, line?
Well, I did have a question.
Yeah, Ned Davenport is here. He's got a slightly corrected version, and we'll be glad to answer any questions that I already answered via email earlier today.
That we didn't get.
That you didn't get.
I didn't get it.
I already got it.
Do you need, oh, you haven't? Okay. Go ahead.
I guess, let's see, so you answered part of it. I mean, just a comment might be that maybe policy needs to look at this, you know, to see if there's so many classes that are, you know, moments below 12, maybe that number's too high. But specifically, the web design class, I mean, that's quite a big drop from 13 that took it last year, and four that are interested. You know, I'm just wondering, a class of four, if that's, you know, the best use of a teacher's time? Is that teacher going to be doing nothing instead of it? Then, you know, obviously, probably the kids take it.
Should we address that?
Yeah, I've been consulting with our guidance counselors. We're confident that that number is going to rise as you, as important as we've got a couple of policies. One, new elective production, new design that's oversubscribed, and given the schedule, not every student who requests this year will be able to enroll in it. Our teacher revamped a course, which is now titled, "Digital Photography in Photoshop." That's oversubscribed as well. So, the thing that the guidance department has shared is that there's going to be a number of students who will be able to get the first choice, and will be guided to take a couple of courses that may be enrolled at a lower rate than the decisions for design and production. So, we're expecting that those numbers are going to, I don't know, increase.
If they don't increase, would, I mean, would there be a teacher not, like, with no class for a period? Or is there, is a full-time teacher teaching this?
Well, that would be part of the .8 full-time equivalent position that's also on the course agenda. If that were the scenario, let's say in a few weeks, once the conference agenda is off, they'd want to consult with Mr. Renal, Mr. Frey, and see what would be the best piece of district to serve. Sitting here right now, I'm working for Swift, a couple of these students, and that's a lot of influence.
Yeah, I will say at this time that one of the flaws of the policy is that it sets a date, and we obviously have to set a date. We can't be coming back to the board every two weeks with this list as it changes, and it will change throughout the summer and even a couple of weeks into the school year. So, for purposes of getting a bead on where we're at, we set the policy, in the policy, we set June 15th as the date. So, wherever things are at that date, because we had to set some date, that's, those are the numbers that are reflected here. But typically, these numbers change, which is why Ed provides you with the previous year's enrollments, so you get a sense as to what the typical enrollment is. There's no guarantee we'll go from four to 13, but it probably wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility that we'd be up around eight, or nine, or 10, in which case we'd probably run the course. The other thing that's in flux every year, and more so this year than in past years, is our AIS needs based on the spring testing, and we've already talked about the spring testing, so we don't have to, you know, go over that again. But we literally don't know what that is going to reap in terms of numbers. So, some of these people may flesh out these numbers, you know, maybe we don't teach this course, but that person picks up two AIS classes. So, that's a, that's an unknown right now. We won't know probably until beginning of August, or even later. So, that'll, I mean, I'm pretty confident that we will use the human resources, maybe not exactly in this way, maybe there'll have to be a little flexibility there. Again, as I mentioned to you in the email that you didn't get, I think when this policy was put in place back in, I think, 2002, the idea was that codifying a process and policy would make sure that the board got to take a look at the numbers of the courses that were not robustly enrolled, and at least the board would be aware of it. And that was, that was the intent at the time. But, and it also helps us, because we look at a course like Music in Our Lives, and there's one kid enrolled in that, even if we pick up a few more kids, it's still only going to be a couple of kids. So, that helps us to make a decision, you know, okay, June 15th, one kid, we're not, we're not running that course. It just doesn't, doesn't make sense. So, it helps us, too, by setting kind of a deadline to take stock of what we have. But, you know, I think Ed's got enough history here that he's got a good sense as to what will probably pick up a number of students. And even though it might not make it to 12, he's probably going to push it up closer to that number. And I think the track record's been, you know, been pretty good. I don't think we've been burnt on, on any of these where we projected three, and that's all we actually had was three. Typically, we'll pick up a few more.
Can I ask you then, so the video production is six, two sections, that's two sections of six, or six?
This total enrolled.
Three in each section.
Typically, in two sections. There are five video editing stations. So, each session is usually, like, between five and eight. So, again, expecting the total number of students in that course to increase.
Okay. Any other questions on the course enrollment issues? Diane?
Is the web design class, in addition to the computer science class we talked about adding as an elective? Or did we not add that?
We didn't, we didn't get the enrollment for that this year.
Okay.
Which is why that math position is only .8 FTE.
Okay.
Obviously, we, you know, the engineering course, kids jumped all over that, and you're oversubscribed to that, I think, or pretty close to it. But I think with the computer, with the computer course that we were talking about, we're going to need a little time to promote it. That's all.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions on this motion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of department chairs and advisors for Ryambick High School for the 2013-14 school year?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional summer 2013 curriculum, clerical, CSE service, and administrative work?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any questions about that?
Just because Deidre had mentioned a little earlier, the bulk of this is our curriculum projects that are related to the Common Core. And Mark and I were going over these last week, and we both agreed, and there's, for reasons we understand, there are many more of these summer projects than we normally have. But one thing that he was impressed about is that a lot more teachers than normal have decided to make themselves available during the summer to get this work done, because they didn't realize the importance and the value of being ahead of this curve. So, they're getting themselves in here, and I think it'll produce a lot of great work. And it's really the work that the teachers themselves have to be in here, and producing and designing towards the kids and the curriculum that's in place right now. So, that's what most of this is for. We're fully budgeted for all this work, so that's not, we're not going to have a lot left over, but we're using what we have. And, like I said, at least 95% of these projects are Common Core or APPR-related projects, so.
Okay, great. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve 2012-13 budget transfers in accordance with Board of Education Policy 6150 for the school year ending June 30th, 2013?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any questions or comments? I think, Diane, you addressed them in the finance committee minutes, so. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of team leaders and advisors for Bulkeley Middle School for the 2013-14 school year?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution? Whereas the Board of Education awarded transportation contracts on January 14th, 2005, for special transportation to Defile Transportation, Inc., extended through August 31st, 2013. And whereas the district and the contractor, Defile Transportation, Inc., mutually agree to extend the contract for the 2013-14 school year.
My apologies.
Adjusted 1.4% as per the May Consumer Price Index, as per State Education Department Transportation Contract Negotiation, Contract Regulations, excuse me. Description of van, the 2012-13 rate is $152.92. The 13-14 rate is $155.06. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education extend the contract with Defile Transportation, Inc. for special transportation for the 2013-14 school year, and that the President of the Board of Education be authorized to execute this extension contract when it is drawn up.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any questions about that?
Just to point out that that 1.4% is an increase that's fixed by the State Education Department. So, if you're renewing a contract, that's, that's the number, period.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution? Whereas the Board of Education awarded transportation contracts on March 22nd, 2005, for home-to-school transportation to Durham School Services LP, extended through August 31st, 2013. And whereas the district and the contractor, Durham School Services LP, mutually agree to extend the contract for the 2013-14 school year, adjusted 1.4% as per the May Consumer Price Index, as per State Education Department Transportation Contract Regulations. Description, the 28-30 passenger bus, the 12-13 rates are $294.59, the 13-14 rates $298.71. 66-passenger bus, the 2012-13 rates $302.95, the 13-14 rates $307.19. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education extend the contract with Durham School Services LP for home-to-school transportation as per the attached proposal, and that the President of the Board of Education be authorized to execute these extension contracts when they are drawn up.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any discussion about that? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Margaret Tedesco as clerk pro temp for the annual organizational meeting to be held on July 9th, 2013?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any discussion? I'd just like to say, Meg, thank you for extending that, and thank you for your services, clerk. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of grade-level chairs for Chancellor Livingston Elementary School for the 2013-14 school year?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to transfer Donna Shellhammer from the position of attendance clerk to the position of clerk effective July 1, 2013?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to hereby abolish the vacant position of attendance clerk, given the notification by Dutchess County Personnel Department that it is no longer testing or maintaining an eligibility list for the position of attendance clerk?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to hereby appoint Stephen Latino, Esquire of Shaw, Parison, May, and Lampert, LLP, as Title IX, Title VII investigator, effective June 25th, 2013, through June 30th, 2014, as needed?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the 2012-13 superintendent's annual performance evaluation?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any questions or comments? Joe, just thank you. For another year, well done.
You're welcome.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Brian McDonald to the position of 1.0 FTE technology teacher, assigned to the Bulkeley Middle School and Ryambick High School, effective September 1, 2013, at a salary of BS Step 2, $52,758, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for the 2013-14 school year?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Kira Godwin to the .8 FTE position of mathematics teacher assigned to the Ryambick High School, effective September 1, 2013, at a salary of MA Step 1, $56,538, prorated at $45,230, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14?